Good evening, it is six oh five on Tuesday, September the seventh. This is Robert Stevenson, I'm gonna call to order the Southwick Talling Granville Regional School Committee Regular Meeting this evening. We will go to. Well, there we go. Okay, we'll do the opening ceremony, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, we have minutes from our last meeting. Thirty, oh, I pulled it out, I pulled it out. I'll have a motion to accept the meetings from the last meeting on the thirtieth.
So, second.
Anyone have any questions, concerns, items on there? Now, we take a roll call vote to accept the meetings. Minutes, Pam?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And Rob's is a yes, motion passes six zero zero. Okay, next, we have warrants. Amy, do we have any warrants? We saw them floating around here, we got those. Everybody, make sure they've got those before the end of the night. Correspondence?
Do not have any.
Nothing, alright. Okay, so we're at our first public comment. Anyone wishing to make a public comment, please let me know. We're in a little bit of a different location tonight, so we have our podium. Anybody wants to come up, we'll have three minutes and we'll have our little red flag come up and let you know. Anybody wanna do public comment? Alright, no public comment. So, student advisory report. Annette, you have anything for us this evening?
Yep, so I'm just gonna talk a little bit about how student life has been now that we're back at school. It's been pretty fun so far, I'm just glad to see everyone like back at school, it's good to see my friends and be able to have a normal lunchtime together. That's a really big fun thing that we've been, we've been doing. Um, I, uh, I had a soccer game today, the boys had an away game, I think Fieldtime had a home game today. Cross country, the cross country teams, they were pretty full, so that's good, everybody seems involved after last year with the no fall athletics. That was a little bit of a letdown, but we're still making our recovery. Um, I had two meetings today, I met with Mr. Trammell this morning. We talked a little bit about the Southwick Regional School chaos at the end of the day. The dismissal situation, we're still kind of getting used to it, there's a lot of people in the student lot and it's been stressful getting out at the end of the day. So, we're kind of been brainstorming just some simpler ideas to make it, make less traffic there. Um, I met with teachers, Mr. Grant and Ms. Hall today for student council. We're planning on holding off elections except for freshman class, we're still thinking about that. Just because the group of students that we had involved in student council last year, we had a really good group of students that would always come to meetings and always would participate, so we just feel like this is the year that we should just let people come in and see what they have to offer. We're gonna get stricter with our attendance policy in student council. Someone in student council, I'm gonna see if they're interested in maybe coming to a few of these meetings, maybe for next year, because I'm a senior this year. Um, her name's Marissa Covielo, her sister Amelia used to be the student advisor. Um, I know some clubs have started up, Students Against Destructive Decisions has one of their first meetings tomorrow. They plan on doing a nine eleven fundraiser with some math sales, I believe. I can get more information on that or how it went. Um, Gay Street Alliance has a meeting tomorrow and that wraps up tonight's report, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Annette. Alright, we have an educational presentation this evening. Mr. Pescatelli, you've got something for us?
We do, we do. Good evening, everybody, thank you for having us tonight. Um, unfortunately, I, I know Brian, somebody who's on, on the, on the list, he wanted to be here. We have other class officers that also were, were not able to be here in the athletics, but I know that Marissa has definitely put together a, um, like a good presentation to be able to share with you on this, this concept, this idea that the students, it's all student focused, it's all encompassing students. Uh, through the summer, Aiden Job and Brendan Vann said, they both, along with the other class officers, discussed this idea around, uh, really painting a parking spot. It sounds pretty, pretty simple and probably some could cringe in terms of the, the potential messiness of it, but on our end, we ended up researching it, talking to the local district. Uh, the Hampshire Regional, they've been doing this for five years now. Uh, it, it's nothing but, anything but positive. Uh, there's negatives that you can probably come up and think of. Uh, those are the same questions I of course asked, uh, and of course, the principal at Hampshire Regional was able to bring me back down to earth and say it's, it actually worked really well. And those potential negatives, making mess, students being negative around it. Um, you know, maybe coming up with a negative symbol or whatever, hasn't happened. So, um, the, all the planning that goes into it, we're gonna, of course, work on together as a, as a team. But I have want, you know, the presentation to focus from the students, so with that, I'm proud of Marissa, she's put a lot of work into this and been preparing with, with the other officers, so thank you, Marissa.
Okay.
Yeah, if you wanna go to the podium.
Sorry.
No, it's okay, I understand.
Um, my name's Marissa, I am our class treasurer and I've been the treasurer for all of my high school, so, um, senior in high school is supposed to be incredibly memorable, an experience that shapes the rest of our lives with classes lasting relationships for us to hold on to forever. However, none of us thought that COVID nineteen would be the reason as to why our last years in high school were so memorable. While we are in uncharted waters, many of us are coming back into the physical school building for the first time in almost eighteen months. This causes an increased amount of stress and anxiety that other normal circumstances would not have happened. Everything has changed, we can't see our friends and peers' faces, nothing about this is normal. As a class officer for our entire duration of my high school career, we looked forward to being able to plan and participate in activities during our senior year that would strengthen our bond as a school community and provide those moments I alluded to in my opening. With varying restrictions due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, we now need to be creative in the activities we play. We are proposing being able to individually paint the parking spaces for the senior class. Seniors will be responsible for their own materials and also responsible for painting over the spots at the end of the vehicle. All themes and images will be appropriate for a school setting and these paintings will take place on a weekend where students can enjoy breakfast together and listen to music. This will create a sense of normalcy under the supervision of any staff that wish to join. The rules for the invite can be discussed in a brief assembly with the senior class. It is important that we can bond as a class with activities like this in the beginning of the year, especially since so many of us are coming back for the first time, and so this is an event that could be, that can become a tradition for our school, for the seniors, and we're requesting that we be the pioneers for such an event. Passing the tradition down to the current juniors will help bring unity to the school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Am I forgetting, or did we discuss this a couple of years ago?
Two years ago.
It's been a.
But we never have gone through with it?
Every year, it get, it got, it gets bring done up every year, and we always wanna do it, but there's just always some issue with it. We don't get it started soon enough, or just too late in the year, the weather changes, something.
Yeah, I was just, in my mind, I was thinking, we've done this for a couple of years, haven't we, but I guess we've never have.
So, here's just a really dumb question, how frequently are parking lots painted, just under normal circumstances, like a traditional parking lot paint, whether it be black, white lines, stuff like that? How frequently is a parking lot painted? And then, obviously, this would result in the painting and the repainting and the painting and the repainting and the painting and the repainting for many, many, many years. Does, is a buildup of paint like that and then washing off due to rain and runoff, are there any negative environmental impacts that we need to be concerned about with rain runoff? That's my only question.
Sure, and that was a question that I asked Hampshire Regional, I mean, they're not, of course, the spokespeople for the EPA or any other environmental agency, but it's a fair question. Uh, she assured me that the type of materials that were used, uh, she, the principal is going to provide me that list if, you know, of course, said, if this gets approved, come back to me, I'll give you, you know, the list that we've, we've gotten approved and, uh, for example, they're not using oil-based paints, they're not using spray paint, they're using water-based, water-based paint. Uh, now, the, the idea behind, um, that whole repave in that project, this is something that I, I know, uh, Mr. Presnell and Mr. Wykender, uh, myself, we, we've talked about in terms of it, we know it's a project that's gonna happen in the coming years, um, and when that happens, like every year, if this did, was approved, uh, every year we'd have to come back and present it in the spring for approval. Be, because of that, that fact that we may have to modify the schedule in terms of when we, we did it with the students. So, I can get more information, especially around the.
My only concern is like, you know, I mean, there's constant rain and weathering and wash off of chemicals, even if they're not water-based, or you know, even if they're not oil-based. Just, you know, is there anything, I, I'd hate to be encouraging our kids to be adding something negative to the ecosystem, that's my only concern, otherwise I think it's a fabulous, fabulous idea.
And then, would you, or would you repaint them in the spring after the plow has gone through there? And ripped any of that stuff up? I guess that, that, that is the only, I, I mean, I think this is, is fine.
More fun unity project where they do it in the fall and they do it again in the spring.
Yeah, they, did they run into that at Hampshire?
They, and they get what they plow, oh.
Yeah, I know, I talked to one, I talked to one of my friends tonight that their daughter does this in Indiana. And it's a different type of paint, they're using latex paint.
Latex.
The paint that they use when they line, it's all a heat-treated paint that's gone there for years. And what they do at the end of the year is they literally power wash it off.
Yeah, you can take a brush and it scrapes it off.
And it comes right, with a power washer, it comes off.
Okay.
Where you can't power wash the lines on a, on, on, on a parking lot, they're not gonna come off. But, I mean, and you could push it into one area, collect it all up and throw it out in the garbage. That, that was my only last question really, is who's the person responsible for, is it, are the students responsible for clearing it at the end of the year, or do we have staff?
It could probably be added to the agreement.
I think that's probably a good idea.
So, then, and this is how they were doing in Hampshire, this is why I kinda stole this idea, it would be the idea of trench for, what's that?
No, go ahead.
Oh, you saw it, yeah, you see him there, but you don't see the paint in the spring, they'll, they'll actually, when they pass the torch, so to speak, of, uh, the eleventh grade class that are going to be those incoming seniors, they'll have them actually paint that space over in terms of like a, a white coat, so they have their, their canvas, if you will, uh, you know, going into August. That's when they do their event as a kickoff to the entire school year.
So, they're not washing it off, they're repainting it over with white?
Correct, yep, but this is, this, especially, it's not at all a, uh, bad idea when we just heard from Chairman Stevens and that, that's what, that's what they're doing at a school in Indiana where they're actually washing it off.
They're just power washing it off, it's clean, and then they go, they go at it the next, the next fall.
Videos of like people with like those long brooms and sometimes they'll just sweep it right up.
I mean, I, I, I like the idea of passing it on, like, like that, that, that seems like a.
Is it like instead of burning the hell to the city?
It just becomes another tradition, that's all. Yeah, yeah.
Hey, that one was cool.
I mean, we give them a shot, if for some reason it goes south, then we, is this cause to look at it next year? Anybody else have any questions or?
Just a couple of concerns that I raise with Mr. Pescatelli, and I know Mr. Wykender did as well, from a facility standpoint. We're, we're, we're hoping that this isn't gonna add anything to the already understaffed facilities department that we have.
Yeah.
Um, so, we're, our expectation and, and I think Mr. Pescatelli says that it would be entirely student, to maintain.
Class, class advisors, myself, because I'm tagged on this one.
Right, yeah, that's what I was worried about, the, the cleaning it off, like, well, that shouldn't, we gotta figure that out, that can't be our.
You know, proper disposal of the, uh, the materials, rollers, brushes, paint cans, things like that. The, um, also, the, the future of that lot, we have a capital project on our, our hit list, our to-do list. Uh, it's probably about two, maybe as many as three years up in the future, uh, a resurfacing of that lot. I can tell you, if I was, if I'm involved in, if I'm still around at that time, if I was involved with resurfacing that with brand-new asphalt, I probably wouldn't wanna see it covered in, in paint in the first year or two. Um, I, I, I just, because then there's no turning back with, with that, you've, you've kind of, you've, you've marred that surface and if, and if the program were to, well, do we not to continue, so, um, I just throw that out there, and as we've just discussed tonight, you can do this thing on a year-to-year basis to prove it.
Um, I guess we'll find out after a year how much damage we've done. Yeah, I mean, from, from a marring perspective, I mean, if one option is we can power wash it off, then, I don't know what kind of damage, long-term damage you could have. Yeah, the only thing is, is who's doing the power washing, that's, that's all.
Right, so, I just, you know, there are some concerns from a facility standpoint, but I, I, I know that the SRS administration's, you know, taking all those things into account and, and.
Marissa, your team's gonna solve this problem if we run into a problem, right? Okay. With all the things that have happened in the last year, if we can give you guys this and you guys can follow through on this, this would be a very good project for you guys to do.
A lot of kids have been looking forward to it, some of them have asked about it, and I know nothing happened in the beginning of the year for seniors, everything you tell us at the end of the year. And with everything that's happened, I think this will brighten up the year.
Sounds good. Yeah, I'm, I'm all for it, I just firm up the plans for the ongoing transition and how that goes from year to year and, yeah, I think it's good.
So, do we have a, like a stencil for each, you know, so obviously you're keeping the proper lines distance, so you can still see the yellow line.
Says in there, yeah. Some of the three inches from the.
Right, okay.
And their, their plan has to be approved.
Who's marking off the spot to make sure that the three inches isn't, are the students gonna hurt? Again, I'm just trying to make sure with the staff is not having to.
I would imagine a stencil, right, you'd have like a two-by-four stencil or a thick stencil.
That's gonna be, that's gonna be me, probably hitting up Mr. Wallace to give us a, a wooden stencil source.
Couple two-by-fours and a piece of plywood with the right width.
We'll be good.
You guys can.
And is this something you envision, envision happening, um, like on a weekend day?
Or like a Saturday morning, not, not until one, someone.
Tuesday at one.
During math class.
Yeah. That's what I wanna do.
Every math class.
We're gonna let, we're gonna let them vote on it.
Come up there, Al, do it.
Anybody got any other questions on this? I think, thank you very much, you're fine. So, hang on, hey, stay, stay close, because we're gonna vote on this, okay? Alright, do we have no policies tonight? Well, alright, action items, superintendent, you are up.
Move to approve the Southwick Regional School Class twenty twenty-two event, SRS Senior Parking Spot, Paint the Palooza for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, recommended. So moved.
Second.
Anybody have any questions or final comments on this before we vote?
Maybe if we could just hear like a wrap-up presentation at the end of the year, you know, after you guys go through a year with it.
Yeah.
Um, plan to come back to us, tell us what you learned, what went wrong with doing it.
All of it, all of it, everyone.
Yeah, so, yeah.
We want pictures.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
If we can add hashtag Rams belong somewhere.
Yeah.
I'm gonna thank you about an image for my spot.
Very good.
There you go. Alright, um, so, let's take a vote on this to approve the Paint-a-Palooza. Pam?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And Rob's a yes, motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the school counselor job description, recommended. So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments on this? Alright, we'll go to a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Pat?
Yeah.
Rob's a yes, motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the adjustment counselor job description, recommended. So, uh, so moved. Second. Long day.
Anybody have any comments or questions on this? Alright, we'll go to a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Rob is a yes, motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the director of school counseling job description, recommended. So moved. Second.
Anybody have any comments on this one? Good, go to a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Rob is a yes, motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the agreement between the Southwick Talling Granville Regional School Committee and Matthew Willabridge, Director of School Nutrition for the period July one, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, recommended. So moved. Second.
Anybody have any comments or items on this? We'll go to a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Rob is a yes, motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve home education proposals, HS twenty-one, twenty-two dash nineteen through HS dash twenty-one, twenty-two dash sixty-three, recommended. So moved. Second.
Alright, superintendent, I have one question for you, is that, I'm assuming the sixty-three means we have sixty-three people in this school district that are doing homeschooling?
Exactly what it means.
And that is a twenty, twenty percent increase from last year, correct?
No.
Oh, no, that's, oh, okay, I thought we had forty last year.
Oh, no.
Oh. Oh, okay.
Oh, really?
That's, we're down.
Well, I.
They, they'll still keep coming.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
Amy's done a really good job of getting people to turn them in, um, much, on a much timelier basis, but, um, you could probably expect to see that number go up a little bit.
Do we ever have any that come in that you reject?
Um, not that I reject, but I do ask for more information.
But for the most part, when they come in, they're well-prepared and set up to make it easy for you to say yes.
Yes.
Alright, to a roll, do you have something to say, Ted? We will roll call votes to accept these. Pam?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And Rob is a yes, motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the PAWS PTO fundraiser, mask and apparel sales for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, proceeds to benefit the general fund, recommended. So moved. Second.
Okay, is this the nine eleven one that we talked about earlier in it?
No, I believe that this is.
Like Ram masks last year, they probably still, I think they still had some left over.
Alright, sounds good, let's, oh, alright, a vote. Pam?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Pat?
Yeah.
Rob's a yes, motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the PAWS PTO fundraiser, box tops for education for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, proceeds to benefit the general fund, recommended. So moved. Second. So, are box tops still a thing? Because like, I don't think we need. You scan them now, yeah, much, much easier, much easier.
So, you don't have to bring the little plastic back, see, now that's like the right of passage.
School days are box tops.
Yeah, but parents, parents that don't have to deal with the, where's the bag of box tops and did you cut them off from the box? You go through Costco's and.
You get this when you get this one.
We, we need to buy this one, Dad, it's got twelve box tops on it.
That's right.
Alright, well, I guess they miss all that. Bye, Marissa, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Bye.
Alright, we'll do a roll call vote, they'll vote to vote in the box tops. Pam?
Yeah.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Rob's a yes, motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the PAWS PTO fundraiser, Meadowview, Meadow, Meadowview, Meadow funds fundraiser for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, proceeds to benefit the general fund, recommended. So moved. Second.
And flowers are included too?
Not this one.
Pumpkins, pumpkins.
These are for pumpkins. Alright, anybody got any questions on this one? Alright, we'll do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Rob is a yes, motion passes six zero zero.
Move to approve the PAWS PTO fundraiser, Amazon Smiles for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, proceeds to benefit the general fund, recommended. So moved. Second.
So, this is gonna be, I'm assuming, the same thing where you've got a nonprofit set up that you can sign in and we get a pro, portion of that from Amazon.
Last year, it was way easy.
Yeah.
Yeah, you just got set up to your account.
Yeah, and then you gotta.
So, a portion of your Amazon goes to.
Yeah, but it's a trick, you've gotta, it's, it's a little tricky, you've gotta sign into Amazon Smile as opposed to Amazon, and if you don't, then the proceeds don't go to the right spot, so you gotta, you've gotta do a little bit of work on that.
Right account?
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
Yes.
Now, are the prices the same?
Yep.
Going through Amazon Smiles versus.
Exact same thing. I don't know what the percentage is, but there's, they say it's a piece, so, I'm assuming it's not a big piece, but it's peace.
I don't think it's been very, well, it's just because of probably you have to sign in to something else that makes it difficult, they don't.
Yeah, because people go to Amazon and they forget to type in Amazon Smile.
Exactly.
And then when they go there the first time, you identify that the, the program that you wanna sign up with. Then, once you do that, you're all set, but it's remembering to go on there.
Got it.
Making it happen.
Alright, let's do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Rob is a yes, motion passes six zero zero.
I'll be it resolved that the Southwick Talling Granville Regional School Committee hereby extends its congratulations to Jeffrey Cool in recognition of fifteen years of excellence as a school committee member. We hereby convey our sincere appreciation for your valuable efforts, dedicated service, and assistance rendered, which has enhanced the image of the Southwick Talling Granville Regional Schools, and a record of these resolutions shall be permanently entered into the minutes of this school district, recommended. So moved. Second. Now, I know we talked about doing something for Jeff. Um, any ideas or have we moved forward on anything with regard to something to recognize his fifteen years?
Best I'd come up with was some sort of plaque or something, I, I don't know, open to.
You got a parking spot with the Parker Blues?
Maybe we can get Marissa to identify a parking spot for Jeff that he can paint.
If you'd like us to work on something, I can work on something.
Is, I guess, it, from a historical perspective, how many members of the school committee have had this kind of tenure?
Not very many. Not many.
That's, and that's why, yeah, no, no, I think, I mean.
George LeBlanc had, James Vincent had.
I will have.
Yeah, you're still on.
You barely have some, maybe Pam, maybe, maybe there would be something, I don't know, superintendent, if you get, like, you know, some places they have schools where they have like a little, I mean, a bigger plaque where if, if somebody's on for X amount of years, they get their name on the plaque.
So, pre-COVID, we were working on, um, a courtyard and then COVID hit, and so it kinda got pushed to the wayside. Um, and it was supposed to, and still is not off, we have a stone that we got for George LeBlanc to go, to be like the big stone as you enter this remembrance, so we were gonna put like a bricks in there for anybody who's worked so many years and to do something there, and that was supposed to be where we were gonna put this type of thing. Um, then COVID hit, when the C-Tech kids were supposed to be working on a drawing, we had to work on a very limited budget. Um, so, it kinda got put on the back burner, because then last year we had COVID, so, um, it's not on the top of the priority list right now, we do have the stone for George, um, but we haven't, we don't have a plan yet for the garden, so.
That may be, I like the idea of that.
Like, do you start amassing stones?
By the guidance counselor's office.
Yeah, we just gotta come up with, yeah, there's a service, I guess.
In the back. It's huge.
We're gonna get a bigger stone for Ted.
I know. I know.
I would love like.
Take the flagpole.
He has a gymnasium.
Yeah, he's, yeah, he's got a couple.
Nice new floors in there.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we can table that, Pam, and think about it, but I think that's a great idea, superintendent, that you guys have got.
Yeah.
Something, I mean, if somebody's gonna, I mean, obviously, you're going to volunteer your time and you're on here for an extended period of time. It would be nice, I guess, from a remembrance perspective to sort of honor those people that have, that have put that kind of tenure into, into coming here and supporting the district.
Jeff has really given his.
Yes.
For, for many, many, many years. And I definitely, I'd like to see us recognize that with, with something special.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, he can't just skate off that easily.
No.
All right, well, let's vote for this resolution because it's certainly, um, well deserved. Um, we'll do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Rob is a yes, motion passes six zero zero.
Be it resolved that the Southwick-Tolling-Grandville Regional School Committee hereby extends its congratulations to Daniel Kelly in recognition of seventeen years of custodial excellence. We hereby convey our sincere appreciation for your valuable efforts, dedicated service, and assistance rendered, which has enhanced the image of the Southwick-Tolling-Grandville Regional Schools, and a record of these resolutions shall be permanently entered into the minutes of this school district recommended.
So moved. Second.
All right, any comments? Mr. Kelly? Okay, we'll vote to put this into the minutes. Uh, we'll roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Uh, Ryan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Rob's a yes, motion passes six zero zero. Hey, this is superintendent, you have a report for us?
I do. I have a few things to report out on. Uh, one of them is that we opened schools last Wednesday very successfully. Um, I know there were some concerns, um, regarding mask wearing. We haven't had any issues, uh, that have been brought to my level on any issues of mask wearing. Um, everybody has been, uh, wearing their masks and coming to school. Um, we have had some issues with transportation. Uh, buses were extremely delayed the first day. Uh, I was work, I called the collaborative and I'm working with the collaborative. I'm trying to figure out where the breakdown was. There was a confusion with bus numbers, kids thinking they were on the same bus numbers as last year until it started at the regional school to back up because kids didn't know what buses they were getting on. And then, then that becomes a domino effect because then Powder Mill gets delayed and then Woodland gets delayed. Um, it's.
On days where they would normally be delayed anyways, first.
Yeah, see, that's. Late buses on the first day.
It's so bad that day. It was really bad on the first day.
So one thing I noticed was that, um, this was the first year that letters with regard to bus routes, um, were emailed out rather than sent as paper copies.
Second.
Oh. All right, I was, so I didn't know if that made a difference because I know people are not good about checking their emails. I don't know if that, you know, made a difference.
I, I couldn't tell you, but Joe said it got better the second day and.
Friday, there was an accident.
And then Friday, there was an accident. Yeah. So, I mean, it just, you know.
Involving a.
Students, yes.
Three students.
No, but not involving a school transportation.
No, 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 no.
No, it just delayed them.
No, it just delayed them. So we sent notice home as soon as we found out to parents so that they were aware. Um, but besides that, yes.
Yes, they're okay. The cars, not a concern.
Well, it's okay, you can always find it.
They'll, they learn, so hopefully they'll get some insurance for that.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, from us switching to that, like, how much time do you think you would have devoted to dealing with those issues the first couple of days that you don't have to deal with now that LP back? Because I even got an email from somebody and I was like, oh, this is great. I could tell him to go talk to.
I, I can't e, I can't even put amount of time on that, could you?
Well, it's, it's hard to say because ultimately we have the responsibility for.
Yeah.
Transportation. I do know that I, I, the, in terms of handling complaints and dealing with issues, they seem to be doing a fine job.
Yeah, which is what we were going, part of what we were going for.
Right.
Yeah. Um, so, yeah, it's hard to quantify, uh, Jonathan, because it, you know, each year is a little different.
Yeah.
We, we've had some pretty smooth years. Um.
I don't think it matters who does the buses the first couple of days. It's just always, there's always.
Yeah. So, you know, we, we had, um, I, I, I think the efforts of Mrs. McGoughlin with, um, you know, mail merging the data, uh, into the emails to go out to families. We, they were late in getting us the information this year, but, you know, instead of putting it onto a paper form and having to get those all folded and stuff, support the email thing expedited, expedited that. So we appreciate her efforts on assisting me with that. Uh, but I, I, I mean, aside from the, whatever the issues were that it was, they created confusion around bus numbers, uh, first day, it's been a relatively smooth rollout. They might tell you differently over there at the transportation facility, but it, it hasn't been, um, most of these issues happened this year.
Uh, the next thing I want to share is current vaccination rates. The date at the top of it should say data as of eight thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-one. I, I did update the spreadsheet, but I forgot to change the first line. So, uh, we went from fifty-one for, in Grandville and includes Tolland, students and children age twelve to fifteen, uh, they went from fifty-one percent up to fifty-five percent in the week and from ages sixteen to nineteen from sixty-seven percent to seventy percent vaccinated. Um, in Southwick-Tolling, at Southwick, uh, ages twelve to fifteen went from forty-seven percent to forty-nine percent. And ages sixteen to nineteen went from sixty-one percent to sixty-two percent. So not huge increases, but still, um, an increase and, uh, hopefully we will be able to get to that eighty percent uh, for vaccination rates. But I will be reporting out every two weeks on the vaccination status so that everybody is aware of it and where we stand. I do not have the teacher vaccination status yet. I, uh, emailed our attorney and he said to hold off on asking for that information, uh, right now. So I'm following his advice and I haven't asked for it yet. Um, most of the teachers that I, I know of are vaccinated. I really don't know anybody, maybe not one or two who are not. Um, but the majority of people in our school district are vaccinated, uh, that work here. Uh, I do want to report out on COVID reporting. So just to be really clear, we are still going to send out a COVID, uh, update notice weekly if we have somebody who tests positive in our school. So we already have somebody who has tested positive. Um, we are going to do close contacts and notify them immediately, but we're not going to send out the notice to all families uh, like we did last year because that Desi last year said, keep going as fast as you can and notify people. This year, we're going to start unless Desi tells us otherwise, every Friday, we're going to let people know how many active cases that we've had in our school district. Um, we are, so we did have that one case and two close contacts, uh, in our school district right now. They were notified and it's in there in quarantine. Um, we are getting the test and stay up and running. We're going to be having, uh, the lead nurse do a presentation for the school committee. But I just need to be really clear with everybody, the school committee and families, the test and stay is only for close contacts for people at school. So if you're identified as a close contact based on something that happened in school, you're eligible for the test and stay, but you are not eligible for test and stay if it's something that happened at work or at a family event. You would need to quarantine for that. So test and stay is only for, uh, close contact, uh, in education. Um, and the last thing, and to me, the most exciting thing, is we rolled out our hashtag Rams belong on the first day of school. Uh, it was so awesome to see people put their, uh, first day of school pictures using the hashtag Rams belong. And in your packets are the, uh, stickers that we have sent out to everybody. So students are getting them and staff members are getting them. And, uh, we want to use the hashtag Rams belong. It's our district-wide initiative this year. We're going to be doing some creative things. We're going to be working with our admin team tomorrow to come up with some different ideas for the Rams belong initiative. And we're going to be putting it on the schools to work with students on ways that we can, uh, do hashtag Rams belong throughout the course of the year. We've also asked our staff members to put up a sign in their classroom that has hashtags Rams belong. And I can't say why they're doing it because we have a student in here, but there's a specific reason why they're going to be putting it up in their classroom. And maybe she'll share out, uh, at one of these, uh, meetings about the hashtag Rams belong in the teachers' classrooms. No, you're not doing anything.
We're doing something.
Find out.
Soon.
Nope.
You sort of need to know.
So, uh, we're just really trying to get this up and running. Um, you're going to see it a lot. And it's really about making a sense of belonging for all children in our school. Um, so really excited, awesome to see all the people using it, like I said, on the first day of school, hashtags Rams belong. And, uh, we're going to have some other swag throughout the course of the year that goes along with this. So be on the lookout.
I like it because last year was Ram Strong.
That's right.
And now it's Rams belongs, we're all together.
Can't trick you.
Jen, quick question on the COVID reporting that you're going to do on Fridays?
Yes.
Um, what is going to be your method of delivery? Is it going to be via email or you're just going to post on the website or?
We'll do both. We'll have it on our website as well, but we'll send out the letter.
Okay.
That lets people know, like we did last year. But parents can count on seeing it on Fridays this year. They won't be getting it every day with an email to check your email, you know.
So, quick question on the vaccinations.
Yes.
The eighty percent needs to be eighty percent fully vaccinated, right? Not just first dose?
Yes.
Okay, so the numbers you gave us tonight was first dose?
Yes.
Okay. How many, do we have numbers? Like, how many students are actually in the seven through twelve?
So the nurses are going to get that out of what they call MIS, M-I-I-S. They don't have the actual, we can actually have the number of our students who are vaccinated. They just have not had time to get that for us right now.
That's, that's going to be the number up top. What, like, how many students do we have in?
The seven.
Seven through twelve. Do we know that?
Yes. Six, I just did it the other day. Six hundred and fifty-something, six fifty-six.
And how many, and I'm assuming that's, they're going to count teachers?
Yes.
Students and I'm assuming.
Pair of professionals.
And the, any employees, maintenance, anybody? So how many, how many does that make up?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Is that something that we can maybe find for next time?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Because that we will know what the eighty is.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know what I mean? Like, we could, it's.
You could advertise.
Strives or whatever the number, we'll know what the eighty percent is and we can sort of, maybe make a.
Bar graph.
Oh, I mean, if we're, you know, you go to a, you go to a donation center and they're like, we need to get to this level. I mean, if we give people like the total that we need to get to, I mean, that may make it a little easier for them to see the progress on it.
We have to find out how many of those people are vaccinated to measure that progress.
Right, right. There's going to, you're going to need to know what the top number is, but if we don't know how many people were going off of, we won't know what the eighty percent number is. All right, awesome. Okay, Mr. Presnell, do you have anything for us tonight?
Not really, other than try to get, um, some guidance on finance subcommittee meetings. We previously had a standing meeting, uh, the second Tuesday of every month at nine AM. Um, I'm not sure if that worked, still works for the current makeup of the committee or if it's a different day that.
How long does that meeting take?
Uh, actually had a memo about an hour. Um, sometimes they go longer depending on the.
And shorter.
Yeah, not too often though.
Wishful thinking.
Either you or I droning on about.
Yeah, Tues, Tuesday at ten, I have a standing meeting that I wouldn't be able to miss, but.
Is there a day that?
Any day other than any morning, Monday mornings, I have a standing meeting at, uh, nine, Tuesday morning, I have a standing meeting at ten. After that, the mornings are wide open.
Mr. Locke, you available pretty much?
I can pretty much make any of those times work.
Before that Wednesday, so that's where you do our active meetings.
Right, right. This Thursday, Thursday.
You're the one who keeps canceling them.
Thursday, Thursday at nine would be, would be fine for me. So is, was it Thursdays, it, Thursdays at nine every other?
Second Tuesday.
Thursday now, every.
Every month.
So I'll send out a pile of invitations.
So technically, we would have this Thursday.
First one, well, yeah, this Thursday.
Well, no, but no, that'd be next week, actually.
No, there was.
This would be the second.
Wednesday was the first, so.
Yeah.
Yes, it would be the first.
So if you're okay with.
I'm okay.
First.
At the sixteen.
Meetings, we do it on the.
Yeah.
Uh, Thursday, Thursday, but then we go to the second Tuesday.
Thursday.
Thursday.
So show up on Tuesday.
It's going to take a long time.
Well, yeah, the only, the only problem I'm going to have is next Thursday, I am out of state.
Okay.
I'll be back that day, but we still. Are we still allowed to do those remote?
When's the next meeting?
Thank God.
That's what we were.
That's the big, the big issue really, is if they have to go back to being in person, it makes it a lot more difficult.
Right.
Yeah. I, I think for the most part, we can, we can continue with the remote. Um, and then if there's occasions where we have to bring our people in, we, we give you advance warning on that.
Now, if it, if it can be done remote, I mean, I can certainly call in. Well, that's, see, that's the beauty of, we were able to do that until they put that emergency order.
Extended it.
Yeah, and then they, they took it away and then they extended it again, but, um, yeah, that made life for me like a lot easier when I could just look away from one computer and go to the other thing as opposed to thinking about like leaving fifteen minutes early for it. I mean, I would be available next month, next Thursday at nine remotely.
Okay. All right, let, let's try.
I mean, I'll be on my way to the airport, but I mean, I can certainly.
What time?
If they said nine.
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 So that's the sixteenth at nine.
I'll be in your office.
All right, and then, I mean, this kind of goes right into subcommittees at this point. A, Amy, we, we spoke earlier, how do we want to set these up? Because I, I don't think anybody's met at this point for any other subcommittee meetings, right?
No, I have my ILT one for what, next month is our first one?
I think it's next month is our first one.
Yeah, that's set up, but I haven't heard about any of them yet.
Okay.
So negotiations next is.
Custodial.
Custodial. And we're looking at October. They want to be in person.
That's fine.
Um, so, but those will be after school. Right, Jen?
Yes.
Yeah. So if you have dates in October, that's still work.
Ted, Pat, and John?
Yeah.
And then Pam, you're all set with the board of directors, like when those are happening?
Yes.
And Amy just emailed the contact for me for the governors. Um, when did, um, Pam and Pat and I are all rookies on this policy committee, when, did they have a standing meeting or?
Yes, every first school committee meeting of the month, um, before executive.
Right before.
With this third. This third. That's what we used to do it.
When I was on it, you used to have one every, I can't remember if there was a consistency to it, but it usually was right before.
School committee meeting.
Yeah.
Last year, we did it because it was all Zoom, so we just were a lot more flexible. But when we had standing meetings, because we were meeting in person for policy, it was always. A four o'clock meeting before a school committee meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can do that.
Okay.
The first Tuesday or the third Tuesday? The first Tuesday is usually ILT though.
Right, alright, so the third, I thought it was the third.
Okay, so we'll do, so we'll, so we'll meet at four o'clock on the twenty first then.
It's the twenty first.
That's our next meeting, right?
Well, nineteenth. You're talking October.
Are we talking?
No, no, I'm talking September.
In two weeks.
In two weeks.
Do we need to do it in two weeks?
Well, I've heard we've had a number of policies and we've, sorry, we've already got two that are, that are pushed down to the committee at, at this point and. Amy's told me that there are a number of other policies that we probably need to tackle, so.
There's as much work there as you want to be.
Yeah. Can, can you do the twenty first? Pat, is that?
Yeah.
Okay, sold. So we'll do the twenty. First at four here. Okay, and then building and grounds.
Could you set it, set me up with a meeting? Tell me when you can set one up with Derek.
Yep.
Alright.
And then I'm flexible, so.
Right.
Alright, so the liaisons, ILT, Ryan, you guys said there's one already set up next month. Okay, and then is wellness set for the school year or is it?
That usually also get email from Jenny and I haven't.
Anything on that yet.
Yeah, I haven't seen.
From her yet.
Yeah, that's, that really hasn't met.
We met last year like every other. And I used, I got emailed from Jenny and so I'm surprised that she didn't send it out with her ILT one.
Could you make sure I get on that?
Amy, can you reach out to Jenny and maybe coordinate that for us?
I think she had on, something she gave us recently, she had them listed, but didn't say like times or where they were.
I think we're meeting back in person again this year.
Yeah, last year it was on the half day Wednesdays.
Mm-hmm.
That was nice.
There you go.
Yeah.
Special Ed.
That's usually as needed.
Yeah, I'd say, I don't know if we even ever met last year.
Technology, Pam and John.
It's the same.
I mean, we never even.
It, I think it's been two years since.
We talked about that before, we don't want to disband that because we got.
Right.
Items coming up. And then capital committee.
That's usually.
Pat's on.
Yes.
I'll go from home.
And then. Ted's going to the Cape in the winter for legislative, right?
Oh, yeah, not November.
Didn't you say you want to go to the Cape in November? Isn't that what you told us?
I can't go this year.
Oh, so what, somebody else will jump in?
Yeah.
It's the fourth through the sixth, maybe.
Of November?
Yes.
Was that a weekend?
During the week.
Yes, it's during the week.
It's my son's birthday, I'm calling it.
I, I could, I have to check to see if anyone would.
Is that, did they do that remotely last year?
They did.
Well, sort of.
They voted remotely.
Oh, that's a Thursday, Friday?
Actually, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Oh, that's a Thursday.
It was very.
Oh, it's the third to the sixth?
Is it the Thursday, Wednesday is a third.
It's usually starts Wednesday, Wednesday.
Yeah.
And they break up Friday, Friday afternoon.
Yeah.
Yeah, November third is a third.
Yeah.
Alright, I'm a tentative maybe on that. I have to check my wife's schedule and.
It's actually pretty good.
I was gonna say, that's tentative on. Child. I could get out of work, but, well, because my work schedule is very flexible, so like, I don't need to just not work those days, but then it's the. Four children.
Nice break for you.
For three days.
It's the first time I've, in the two years I've been here, everybody's been fighting over it, so.
It's actually a very good conference and so.
You're, you're really good at sales.
I'm telling you, it's very good. Could meet tons of other superintendents and it's really well done.
Oh, you go, you go to it too?
I go to it as well, yeah.
Yeah, I went. Geez, I don't know how many.
Every year.
Yeah.